Additionally, just a reminder to the community because board members are online this evening. All votes will be done via roll call. First item on our agenda is approval of our agenda. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We will now vote by roll call to approve tonight's agenda.
Allen Berg.
Aye.
Aram.
Aye.
Barry.
Aye.
Birdman.
Mr. Birdman. Gable. Birdman.
Here.
Aye.
Ella just came in. Aye.
Aye. Ovi.
Aye.
Man.
He stepped out and he'll be back in a minute.
Okay, by a vote of six to zero, tonight's agenda is approved. I'm Dr. Stanley. Would you please review tonight's agenda for us?
Absolutely. Um, so tonight, we, we have no hearing from members of the public. We have a consent agenda for discussion. We are going to hear about an update on strategic plan. We're going to receive an update. The board will receive an update on the media specialists and the new, the new model. And where that has moved to. We'll receive a Legislative Action Committee recap. We have policies that are up for review. And then for action, we have mental health, adult basic education joint powers agreement. Director Woodard is going to bring forward the preliminary budget. We have several policies that the board will act on. And then we'll have leadership and committee updates and superintendent updates.
Thank you, Dr. Stan- Stanley. Next on our agenda is our excellence in action portion. And this month's excellence in action will feature the favorite things mural that was designed and painted for a Normandale fifth grade class as a gift to their school or by a Normandale fifth grade class. Our presenters are fifth grade teacher Sarah Keel and parent volunteer muralist Kimberly Sedd. Welcome.
Thank you so much for inviting us to share this project. It's been such a joy to be working on this with the fifth graders. And I'll actually let Sarah start to kind of tell everybody how it even came about. So if you could go to the next slide.
Okay, here they are, our fabulous fifth graders from Normandale. It started because Kim was a guest at the Normandale Media Center. She was doing a presentation for, Kim, remind me the name of the.
Art Adventure.
Art Adventures, right, through the Minneapolis Institute of Arts. Thank you. And so she had done a presentation for our students. They were very engaged in the presentation. And as they went to check out their books from the media center, I heard Kim having a conversation with other adults about how she paints murals. And so I kind of wiggled my way into the conversation and I said, oh gosh, you know, I've kind of had this, this dream of doing a mural painting in my classroom. And Kim, just making small talk, right, but Kim said, hey, you know, we could probably make that happen. And so we did a little bit of discussing and we checked in with Mr. Holden, Mr. Holden. And there was some concern about doing mural painting inside of a classroom where there, the space might need to be switched up or if there were some restrictions that might have gotten in the way. So he suggested we use other space in the building and offered that we could use the collaboration space. But there was a lot of wall space there. And so we were able to invite all four classrooms to be part of the project. So Kim came in and really pitched the project to my fifth grade class. And they were super engaged, super motivated right from the beginning to be part of this project. And I think, Kim, you would agree, they felt ownership right from the get go.
It was their project from the start. They had ideas. When it was opened up to questions or even ideas, they immediately started throwing things, things out there. And so we sort of let them lead it. We, we definitely kind of had a plan for how it was going to go. I had an idea for how it would work, but it was really a collaboration, sort of a co-creation with our fifth graders, how the process would work. As we went through, things were changed up. We asked for their input throughout the entire process. So they were engaged from the start. Their first, our first act was actually doing a brainstorm with them.
Which is what you see here in this picture. So they wrote down their ideas on a post-it and they're busy here categorizing their ideas. Because initially we thought, okay, well, we need to come up with a theme that's very specific that will help get this project launched. And so they're organizing their ideas into categories. But as we watched them do this, they had such amazing ideas. And to Kim's credit, she looked at all the ideas and she said, you know what? All of these are fabulous ideas. We should use all of these. We should create a mural of all of our favorite things. And it was funny, Kim, I don't even know if you remember this, but kids were asking, wait, do we really get to do this? Are we gonna get to paint on the walls? And so really, it was, it was a process where they were engaged and motivated and collaborating. You can see right there in the picture, collaborating right from the beginning. So once we had established that we were going to do a theme of all of our favorite things, it really, it took off. And the fifth graders got right to work. So we used a lot of our SEL time. Kim would come in once a week and work with fifth graders to help them get their collages, to help them come up with ideas for their collages and help them work through that process. So Bedston, if you can go to the next slide, I think we'll see some pictures. There you have a, an image of all of their different ideas, favorite things. Can you go to the next one, Bedston? And here you can see them hard at work. So this was a process that took several, several days of SEL time. But if our SEL, if our goal is to establish a strong community and belonging in our community, you can see it happening right there. Students who are so eager to work with each other. And, and in fact, some of the best pieces were pieces where they each pitched in to help create the image. So I think, Kim, we'll see the macaroni and cheese.
Yeah.
This was several, several students who worked together to create, to bring an image to life.
Yeah. So this is them. We gave them colored paper, scissors, glue, art supplies. And we just asked them to collage their favorite things or express themselves in some way with their favorite thing. And you can even see in some of these pictures, like in the top left there, that pink piece of paper has hearts cut out of it. That's just scrap paper. I kept that all and I used it in the mural design. So everything from the scraps that were created, the murals that were created, every single kid, a hundred fifth graders, each made an original piece of art that's represented in the mural. You could actually skip to the next slide to see examples of some of these collages that they made. And this is a very tiny selection of the over a hundred pieces that were used and created. It's everything from food, quotes that they find inspiring, sunshine, of course, cactuses, places they love. There were a couple of travel specific themes that were used, flowers, that gorgeous hand with a pencil writing, like this is just like, everything was so good. It was so hard to even pick this small sampling. But really interesting and really creative and everything was very different, but it all came together. If you flip to the next slide. Where I sort of stepped in was in the sort of digital recreation of things, because you have to assemble. A mural has to go on a specific space. And the flex space that we were, we were using had the locker wall in the hallway. There was a whiteboard wall. There were two giant pillars in the space that we also were able to paint on. And then some, a wall with windows that we sort of, you know, climbed on some furniture to get to. But it was lots of, lots of corners and lots of spaces. So in order to make it work with all these original pieces of art, I digitally recreated each one of them and then assembled these little vignettes to represent each one of the kids, each one of their original pieces of artwork. And I kind of put it together so it would be fun, just little, little scenes for everybody. So, you know, you can see in that right page, there's the banana, but it's behind the airplane. And you can see behind that, that's a cut paper that has clouds in it. So that was just a scrap paper that I found in the folder. And I was like, oh, that's cool. We'll put clouds with the airplane. So this was, every single kid was able to contribute. If you go to the next slide, that was sort of the easy part, I'll say. That we had to make sure that there was a plan for actually getting the paint onto the walls. And in order to do that, we wanted to transfer that digital image, almost like a paint by number, onto the wall. So we were able to project it. Most of the spaces, the projection was really easy. Some of the spaces were pretty tight. And so we had to do a lot of math. I did pixels to inches conversions and made it work. So there's another picture in this, in this slide of my eighth grader helping me outline. Oh, there he is. Rising ninth grader now, but you can sort of see that image is very faintly projected there. We were climbing on furniture to cover up the fluorescent lights to make it dark enough. We made it work. And then we had this beautiful outline on the walls. So the next week when the kids came in, they had a plan. So we had, if you flip to the next slide, actually, you can start to see their work. This is just, there's, if, click it once more, there's another picture in there. Thank you. They put in the work on this. So they took those outlines. We had printouts of the plan posted everywhere in the space. So kids could reference it. They could find the right colors. They could see what was going to be next to what. They could really sort of completely own the painting process. We had a bunch of parent volunteers washing brushes and helping them change out paint, making sure the drips were picked up. You know, we did our best to cover the floors. But really, every single kid, every single class were able, they were able to come in and paint on the walls. And huge credit to the teachers for readjusting schedules and sort of getting really creative about how to make sure everyone could get involved and have an equal opportunity to, you know, paint a wall at school.
Yeah. And they really, it was, it was funny because some third graders walked by and we heard them say, we can't wait till we're in fifth grade. And we kind of looked at each other like, oh, nope, this, this is not an annual project. But, but it did give us the idea that, or it gave us the, you know, it told us that this is meaningful work that we're doing and that it created, it created a sense of community. And there was engagement. And one of the best things, Kim, I think that, that came out of the project was, at first, kids were so excited to see their own collage projected onto the wall. And they really were so excited to paint their collage. But logistically, that was going to be hard because we had one class come in at a time. Because already 25 kids running around with cups of paint was a little heart stopping. But we had good, you know, we established good guidelines and we had systems in place. And we had parent volunteers and, and Kim was a great leader. And so it really did, it worked well. But we explained to kids that this was a group project. It was a collaboration. And that everyone was going to help with all of the painting. And so quickly, kids stepped up to, to work together, you know, to paint different spaces, even if it wasn't their piece. And we were a little bit worried that kids would kind of feel like, oh, that's my piece. Like, I don't want you to paint it that way. Or it was, it was, it created so much positive energy that there wasn't even room for the negative. It just, we didn't, it didn't even occur to kids to, 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 you know, compete with each other. They were working together. And it was just a beautiful project to see come alive on the walls. And yeah, and one that the kids are so excited to gift to Normandale. They're so excited that they're leaving a piece behind at Normandale. Really feeling, they really felt proud of it.
Yeah, this is, it's amazing. These pictures look very calm. The kids were so focused, but there was a lot of energy in every day of painting. They came in with maximum energy to do this. And it was really fun to see them when they, when they like grabbed their paint cups, they lined up, they got their paint cups and they went straight to work. It was amazing. I'll go to the next slide, please. So, and then the next one, our impact. We, this is like funny little stats, but just to show that it was a true community project. It wasn't, you know, just the two of us. It wasn't just the fifth graders. I brought in an artist friend. My friend Sarah came in. Weekend, my friend Megan came in. My husband came in and helped. We did a lot of the touch-ups when the kids were done painting. We sort of wanted to just basically like just touch it up, clean it up, make sure everything looked really sharp the way that the kids really envisioned it. All four classroom teachers, we had two interns, plus Madame West in the library came and painted for a couple of days as well. I was in on the weekends, a lot of the weekends, so the weekend staff, you know, called Pat. He had to let me in a few days and just got to know the weekend staff and the admin. The entire administrative staff was super supportive and excited about the project. So this was sort of like the talk of the school for a couple of weeks. And it was really fun. But 12 gallons of paint, we went through about 200 something brushes and 104 fifth graders contributed. So this is, this is just a lot of great work. Can go to the next one, please.
There they are.
So that's it. So I had a photographer friend who was able to come in and volunteer her time, Chelsea Lopez. She's amazing. We've worked together for a few years. And she came in and we had, what, Sarah, 15 minutes to get.
It was not a lot of time. We got a lot done. And you can see like, just, I think that this picture is a visual of how collaborative the process was. Because we weren't sure that we were going to fit 100 kids in the collab space to take a picture. But there, I think that there, there might be like one exception, but everybody's looking at the photographer. That in itself is a, is a feat. But it just shows you like how much that they were, that they took ownership of the project and how proud they were of the work that they did.
Yeah. And if you click through the next couple of slides, it's more pictures. Yeah, this is kind of part of, like, you could see the inside of the space. And then to the left of that is the locker wall that we, that you'll see in the next slide. But there's the mac and cheese kind of center. So that was a collaborative, original artwork that made it to the wall. But it's really, it was incredible to see the kids come in and find where theirs was and see how people painted it. And they got to touch it up usually on their own. And it's fun to see the younger kids come in too and sort of discover things. They're like, oh, that's cool. There's a switch. There's a, you know, oh, that's an Oculus. Oh, that's a dog like mine or pizza. And they, it's a sense of discovery. Like every kid comes in and they find something new on the wall.
And it brings a lot of joy to the space. So I think it's, it was a lesson for me. Sometimes we get, we get really focused on the, on the curriculum that we're teaching. And we want to make sure that we're doing all the things that we need to be doing. And when, when we step back and we, we make this opportunity available for, for students. And this was really Kim who made this opportunity available for our students. It created a whole different sense of belonging. And like it, it, it was a collaborative project that allowed students to feel engaged and motivated. And it really brought the, the community of fifth graders, fifth graders together at Normandale. So we're really grateful for that piece of it, to offer that experience to our students. And then we get to keep this amazing artwork and continue to enjoy it. So it was a win-win, a win-win, win-win.
A win-win. We're going to click to the next slide and Sarah will pronounce what's on the wall and tell everybody what it means.
Right. So one of, one of my fifth graders worked really hard to do, and you maybe can remember it from a previous slide. We can do hard things. And she, she took it home to finish it because she wanted to make sure that it was done just right. And she brought it back to me and I thought, oh, gosh, like this could be, this, we're a French immersion school. And there could be people who are hoping to see French on the walls. Like that's, that's part of our identity at Normandale too. So can we, I, I went to her and I said, would you please, could you also do it in French for us? And she was very excited to, to bring it alive in French too. And so you see it here in French on one of the walls. We have the original English version and then we have the French version. And it really is, I think, the centerpiece of, of the work that we did together.
Yeah. Into the next slide, please.
So there you can kind of see it.
Yeah, you can see, and the next one is actually even better. But this is sort of an example. You can see the girl on the left, her flower and see it on the wall. And then that's my son Freddie, and he made a little potato man that's just above there, the little orange potato guy.
Which was an inside joke with fifth graders, like the, every time they could, they would weave in the word patat. But this part of their, the, the joy that they brought to this project.
So it's a little inside joke for them. And then on the next slide, you see the student who created the You Can Do Hard Things. And then another student who honored her, her puppy in there with some paw prints and the dog. And then another student who created a little, a little character. And the final slide, Sarah, do you have anything to add for these?
Um, just that these were students who really, I think it was a boost for all students, social emotionally. And then there were some students who really benefited, who really, I think, felt uplifted by this opportunity to collaborate with their peers and, and with you, Kim. And I, and, and so it was more than just doing an art project together. I think that they, they left Normandale as fifth graders, knowing that they were supported and loved and part of a bigger community. Yeah.
Yeah, that was very cool. And then the final slide. They signed it. So it's there. Class of 2024. But we did, if people want to learn more about it, we did create a website, normandalemural.com. And anybody can go there, see photos. There's all the photos of all the original art are on that website. More photos of the finished piece, lots more detail. It's just an incredible, incredible process. And now it's there, hopefully for a good long time because we worked really hard on it.
That's right. Yeah. So there it is. Come to Normandale and see it. It's not, it's hard to miss. It's there for you to enjoy.
Thank you so much. That's absolutely amazing. And Sarah, I apologize, I had the wrong teacher's name down for the presentation. I want to make sure that you get recognized for coming and joining us tonight.
No, thanks. I heard you say my name. I'm glad to be here. Thank you for inviting me.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I had the right name. Director Birdman, I saw that you had your hand up.
Yes. Can you hear me? Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. As a former Normandale parent myself, I know exactly where this space is. My number, first of all, the amazing project, it's, I mean, far out, there aren't words to probably describe how amazing that is. The one question that came up to me was, how did the rest of the school respond to this amazing effort? How did all the kindergartners and the first graders who were in that wing of the building and so and so where, as they watched this happen and so on. So I'm just curious as to how they were impacted by all of this.
I can, yeah.
I wanted to say one thing. I think in, in the early stages, Chris Holden was nervous that kids would walk by and, and maybe not be respectful of the space or fingers would swipe across the wall unintentionally. And kids were just so fascinated. They were very careful with the space. And they were very in awe of the work that was being done. And so you could tell that it was meaningful, not just to our fifth graders, but to the, the other students in the building as well, just by the way that they treated the space when they walked by it.
There was so much curiosity. Like an entire classroom of kids would be quietly walking down the hallway and the teacher would stop. They'd stop and they'd want to look. And the teacher, you know, a lot of the teachers would say like, yep, like you can look with your eyes, don't touch with your hands. And when I, whenever I was there, I would say, do you guys want to hear what we're doing? And so a lot of the kids were able to stop and I'd do a quick, just kind of introduction of what the project was and what the outcome was going to be. And they were super excited about it. So there was so much curiosity and I love to see that.
And Kim, I just want to extend. And Kim, I just want to extend our gratitude to you for volunteering your time. And please extend it to the other parent volunteers and community members that volunteered. It's just amazing and clearly impacted the students and the school environment. So thank you both for the extra work and thank you for explaining what the little potato man was. I was actually wondering if it was Mr. Peanut or Potato, so. So thank you for coming tonight. Yay.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you. Um, before we move on to our consent agenda, because we don't have any hearing for members of the public, I have one more thing to add to our excellence in action tonight. And I want to make sure, um, Assistant Superintendent Smazel is on and can hear. And, um, though some of you in the community might not know that tonight, this is very last board meeting, um, for Edina Public Schools. And so the board has a commendation for Director, uh, Assistant Superintendent Smazel that we will be voting on in the consent agenda. And I wanted to make sure that it was read into the record, um, in case or, or the community wants to listen to it or anyone in, uh, Assistant Superintendent Smazel's family wants to, uh, listen to this recording. Subject commendation of Randy Smazel. Be it resolved that the school board commend and recognize Randy Smazel for his service to Edina Public Schools from 2012 to 2024. The board hereby expresses its sincere appreciation and that of the staff and residents of the school district for Randy Smazel's 12 years of devoted service to the, to Edina Public Schools and its affairs during the period of 2012 through 2024. For the past 12 years, Assistant Superintendent Smazel has been instrumental in bringing Edina Public Schools' mission, vision and values to life. His embodiment of the district's mission to help each and every student discover their possibilities and thrive has been inspiring. Dr. Smazel is guided by integrity, compassion, courage, commitment, appreciation and responsibility. Some of his most apparent values are his compassion and care, his ability to listen and collaborate with others and his enthusiastic passion for our students and what they are learning, especially all things science. In his roles as both Director of Teaching and Learning and Assistant Superintendent, there are very few district initiatives that Dr. Smazel has not been involved in. Some highlights include engaging community, students and staff in developing the next-gen EPS strategic plan in the early 2010s as well as the current 2020 to 2030 strategic plan. Implementing and leading the coordination of an early childhood through grade 12 program to create a personalized learning experience for all students. Coordinating the use of technology and learning spaces to enhance the learning experience for students. During COVID, Edina Public Schools was fortunate to have the leadership in place, his leadership in place to launch learning in Edina Kids Homes. Randy was a key leader in making this difficult transition and provided collaborative leadership to ensure student engagement was top of mind for schools. Launching our Spanish Dual Language Immersion Program at Countryside Elementary School, our marquee STEM programming and our Pathways programming. Randy has worked under a leadership of three different superintendents who each had the following commendations for him. Rick Drezen, Dr. Randy Smazel has numerous leadership talents that have been instrumental in advancing the mission of the district. His visionary skills blended with innovative talents, caring ways and collaborative connections helped him champion numerous educational initiatives that enhanced personalized learning of all students. His leadership impact will be part of the Edina Public Schools for years to come. From John Schultz, Randy Smazel is a special administrator. In his leadership, he is always committed to understanding what kids need for their day-to-day growth and future. Randy would often be found at Edina Schools participating in a variety of activities with Edina students in classrooms. He was found most often in science classrooms, pushing students to inquire, asking them, asking them why they are amazed at what they see. Randy always brings his teaching expertise to conversations with school and community leaders. And as a result, students are at the core of his work. And for Dr. Stacy Stanley, Dr. Randy Smazel's value for the people he works with under, undergirds all of his work. His warm personality and genuine interest in the well-being of others have made him an admired leader throughout the district. In the recent years, Randy led design teams to launch two of our, two of our new marquee programs, the Spanish Dual Language Program at Countryside Elementary and the Student Spaceflight Experiment Program. These programs embody the district's vision for each and every student to discover their possibilities and thrive. We are grateful for Dr. Smazel's many contributions and wish him much happiness and fulfillment as he prepares for this next, this new chapter of his life. Over your years of service to the district, the board has had the privilege of watching you grow as a leader and worked diligently to advance the Edina School District's goals in numerous ways. We will greatly miss your enthusiasm, strategic mindset and compassionate leadership. The board members congratulate Randy Smazel on your retirement and extend a collective and individual thank you for a job well done. Go Vikings. Yay. Do you have anything you'd like to add before I have a very special, um, presentation from the board for you?
Well, I thought that was the special presentation. That was amazing and thank you. Boy, um, it's humbling because there's so many talented, incredibly talented people that work in Edina Public Schools, that work for the board or are the board, that, um, work for kids. And, um, this is the greatest place to work. The families, the community, the, the staff, the, the students. I, it has been an amazing opportunity for me and I am so grateful for that. And, um, I can't think of a, a better place to spend your career in education. It's a fantastic community. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. This works better in a boardroom, but we happen to be in the same room tonight. So I am going to turn my camera off and bring Dr. Smazel or Director Smazel, uh, Assistant Superintendent Smazel a little present from the board.
Thank you.
I have to explain part of it, so we have to open it and then.
This is incredible. It's like magic. There we go, right there. We finally got it on a board meeting. Thank you, thank you so much. That's fantastic.
So thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Randy.
Thanks, Randy.
Okay, we're going to move on to our, um, there were no hearings for members of the public. Um, but please feel free to, um, use our form to fill out if you'd like to, um, provide public comment at our next board meeting. We're now going to move on to our consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We will now vote by roll call to approve the consent agenda.
Allenberg.
Aye.
Arum.
Aye.
Barry.
Aye.
Bergman.
Aye.
Gable.
Aye.
Booby.
Aye.
Man.
Aye.
I have voted seven to zero, the consent agenda is approved. Moving on to our discussion items, we have four items for discussion tonight. And first is our strategic plan core planning team overview. And I would like to turn it over to Dr. Stacy Stanley and she will introduce our guest tonight.
All right, um, thank you very much, Chair Ellenberg. So, um, every year I bring together a group of about 50 to 52 people, depending on how many people are there to really dig in and analyze our efforts toward realizing our strategic plan. Um, you remember last year when we brought the team together, they gave, uh, some feedback that, um, caused us to change Strategy C, that caused us to extend out our strategic plan from 2027 to 202030 to ascertain that our staff was, uh, represented within our strategic plan in Strategy C around staff, mental health and wellness. Um, so this year, Paula O'Loughlin, who was from an organization called Partner Ed, who we contract with to facilitate the processes, is going to come in and, uh, share about the days that we came together. Uh, we were able to actually get out and visit sites this year as well as provide reports to the, um, members of the core planning team, which includes a couple of board members. And so Paula, are you on?
I am, hello, Dr. Stanley.
Good. Okay, um, so, um, thank you very much for being with us, um, this evening, Paula, and I will turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Superintendent. Good evening, Chair Ellenberg, Dr. Stanley, members of the board, and see lots of cabinet members and any friends, families, students and community members that may be watching. Uh, thank you so much for, for allowing me to, uh, join you this evening to share about the day and a half that we spent with the core planning team. And if I may, I'm just going to share my screen.
Hold on just a moment. What, um, hang on just a moment. Okay, I believe you should be able to share your screen now.
Okay, thank you. All right, let me put this in slideshow mode. Okay, whoops, I thought it was at the beginning here. Okay, you're seeing a little rewind, all right. So again, my name is Paula O'Loughlin and I've really had the privilege for three years now, uh, consecutive years to work with the core planning team and have just been so impressed. Uh, as a former school board member, knowing that the strategic plan is really our North Star and the roadmap by which we all are, are working toward those common goals and, and strategies and strategic priorities. And it's just been amazing to, to see the work of, of this collective group the last few years. So as Dr. Stanley mentioned, kind of the purpose of the core planning team, we're really to, to come together and hear updates, uh, that accountability piece, as you know, is, is really important. And so receiving those progress indicators and, and hearing firsthand from students, from staff and, and from parents in terms of the impact and, and the work that is being done. And just to echo again what Dr. Stanley said, that this strategic plan originally, uh, as you know, the school board was voted, uh, approved from 20 to 2025, the plans span that time. And then in lieu of the pandemic, uh, and upon recommendations from the core planning team in 2023, the plan has been extended. All right, and of course, the real purpose, right, are students and for Edina, for each and every student to discover their possibilities and thrive. And the mission, ground us in that and overview. So the first meeting in April of 2022 came together. And then this year, we met on April 4th and 11th. And again, multiple opportunities for the core planning team to receive information, to ask questions, to really dig in to the data and then ultimately come up with, uh, what they, what they were able to, uh, process and, and analyze from that data. Again, as Dr. Stanley said, that site visits were new this year. Uh, I helped facilitate the conversations, uh, upon the return from the site visits. I did not go myself, but just hearing from staff and students and families and board members, just what they were able to, to see and just, uh, how much it related to, again, fulfilling those strategic priorities of the district. And you'll see here, some of the schools, the sites that the core planning team members were able to, to visit. So each member was equipped with a journal and a writing utensil and really had the chance to interact and again, kind of just dig in and, and see the work in action and really have this experiential opportunity to, to see firsthand, uh, the work that has been, uh, the work that is taking place in, in your schools. And so in their journal, they were asked to answer three different prompts. What were those things that really stood out? What are things that they might want and need a better understanding of? And then what are those celebrations that we really want to lift up that our students and our staff and families are doing? This just kind of gives you an oversight, it looks very cryptic with all the, uh, acronyms and, and, uh, the groupings. But this was just something, uh, to show the group how all those site visits related to different strategies. Uh, the in-person presentations that we had, some of them that didn't lend themselves, um, to maybe seeing in person, uh, for example, uh, finance, uh, with, uh, Mert, who gave his, uh, presentation, uh, that maybe it was harder to see him in person. So, uh, these were all the, uh, the site visits and the strategies that they applied to. So key takeaways, when everyone came back, we had a working lunch. They shared all the responses to those three prompts and they did some mind mapping and what were some themes and some things that really stood out. Uh, we started in small groups, they found another small group and then eventually we had the large group and a large group discussion. And these were really the four takeaways from their site visits and these themes of agency, inclusive partnerships, continuity and excellence in instruction. And again, a couple of the presentations that the core planning team members were able to hear around finance and marketing and some other special student programming with special guests, um, of the students who came and presented. Core planning team members were able to hear more in-depth information, uh, and, and progress made toward those strategies. Once again, the core planning team engaged in the SOAR analysis. So looking at those strengths, opportunities and the aspirations and the results for all the multiple data points that they saw and really being able to synthesize that data so that they can provide some modifications, recommendations, uh, insights to Dr. Stanley and her team as they continue the implementation of, of the work of the strategic plan. All right, so I won't read all of these individually, I'll, I'll highlight a few, uh, ones that really, uh, kind of had a, really came through, I think, strong and for each strategy. But here, strategy A, advance academic excellence, growth and readiness. There was so much conversation and so much pride around letters and just the, not only the, the results, which are amazing, but really the, the effort, the collaborative effort between the students and the educators and the families and really coming around to, to support that learning. Many opportunities that were, that were identified there and aspirations around how do we better prepare each student? And results, what are some of those indicators? How will we know that we've reached our success? And lots of, uh, discussion around the career technical education. Strategy B, ensure an equitable and inclusive school culture. So Edina Unified, uh, was really kind of the, in my personal opinion, kind of the, the star of the, of, of the whole process this year, uh, as every year, coming in to, to really demonstrate and show kind of what the, what work is being done to really build and. kind of what the, what work is being done to really build and have not only a culture of inclusivity, but just a culture of how we are interacting and being with one another and again, moving toward those progress indicators of the strategic plan. You'll see the opportunities here and the aspirations and results. Lot of conversation about how do we continue to foster and ensure a sense of belonging for each and every student, staff, family member, community, any Edina public schools. So Strategy C, Foster Positive Learning Environments and Whole Student and Staff Wellness Support. Excuse my forgetting the space, missing the space between the S and the capital S of support. So you'll see the strengths here. And again, really talking about that alignment and how seeing that across all buildings, that social and emotional growth, especially in the elementary curriculum. Opportunities, aspirations and results. So again, conversations about how do we better nurture and make sure that every safe, excuse me, every space is safe and inclusive for everyone in our schools. All right, Strategy D, Develop Leadership Throughout the District. Again, the strengths, you'll see letters, again, pathways, web, lot of student leadership groups, which were really amplified and lifted up and some of the students that were part of the core planning team, speaking to their experiences. So the opportunities there around grow your own flexibility and scheduling. Aspirations, talking about what are some other additional leadership opportunities for students so that everyone can have a chance to connect and to really serve as the leader that they are in whatever way that looks like for them. And then results, again, what are the tangible outcomes that we will, that will show and provide evidence that we are making our, sorry, progressing to our desired outcome for all students. All right, and Strategy E, Engage Parents, School and Community. So again, this is, I'd have to say, just in the three years, one of my big takeaways is the engagement and engagement of the community. The care, the generosity, the pride and just really the willingness to want to be part of this collective that is Edina Public Schools. And so lots of strengths that focused on that. Opportunities, how do we continue to include more students, more families? Aspirations. And results. And again, how do we make sure that everyone feels really connected and feels that they truly belong to Edina Public Schools in those different access points to which they can be connected and so working toward that. All right, so again, in the last, as we did the last two years, after they did the SOAR analysis and we went through the strengths, opportunities, aspirations, results, then we talked about, all right, what are some of those celebrations we really want to call out? And then what are some recommendations that can be passed on to Dr. Stanley and her team, similar to the one that resulted in the Strategy C to include staff as well as extending the timeline of the strategic plan? So what are some of those things that Dr. Stanley can take back to her team for consideration? So first and foremost, as always, students to be celebrated. Again, Edina Unified Communication and Marketing, Daphne shared some amazing work that she and her team are doing to really make sure that everybody knows about the amazing things that are happening in Edina Public Schools. Lot of talk about the intentionality and the purpose by which teachers and staff and educators are really coming together. Elevating student voice. I know, Dr. Stanley, that's something that is, again, comes through so loud and clear, definitely in the core planning team, but just so many other examples in which students' student voice is really centered. And then the amazing staff as well. All right, so the recommendations, again, these are, when I look back to the, over the three years, some similarities around how do we continue to elevate awareness about what is going on in Edina Public Schools so more people can participate, more students can belong and increasing access. So what are those things, maybe within the systems or structures that can be examined to make sure that all students, all families have opportunities? Looking again, continuing on the work that has been done and continues to be done around cultural awareness, talking about, again, really amplifying the experiences and the breadth and depth of the richness of the different cultural, cultural differences that you have in the city. More intentional in the efforts in Strategy B, again, going back to ensuring a sense of belonging for every student, every staff, every family member. And then the last one, again, speaking to that piece around sharing our story. How do we make sure that this, that we are really making sure that we can tell the story and let people know all the amazing things that are happening? All right, so the three key messages that really came through discussion was the team really wanting the public and others to know that it's so much more than just maybe what is on, kind of captured on paper in a document, but there are very specific action steps that are being very intentionally implemented and developed and monitored and continuously responsively adapting to meet the needs of our students. The accountability piece, transparency is, I know, a huge value of the boards and Dr. Stanley and her team. And that was another common theme that came throughout. How do we continue to do this work as transparently as possible and making sure that our community can help keep us accountable to meeting those goals for our students? And then the last one, continuing to center the voices of our students and families and staff, we really can have that collective impact of what is possible for each and every student. Analysts there of the 2024 committee members. With that, I will stop sharing and I'm happy to take any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you so much, Paula, for the presentation. Board members, what questions or comments do you have? Director Bergman?
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation, the information. I'm always curious, as we go through, as we're now in our third year of doing so, have we noticed anything or did anything come across this particular year that surprised us? Either in an area that we excelled or exceeded what we thought we were going to do or in areas that popped up that we thought, oh, we hadn't really thought about that and it really kind of surprised us in an area that we might want to focus on going forward?
So I can speak from a facilitator standpoint, but I think that in terms of being able to hear from, you know, of course, Dr. Stanley, the two board members that were there, Director Gable and Chair Allenberg, Gabler, excuse me, as well as others who served on the team. I don't think that there were any surprises and this might actually sound kind of like a paradox or a kind of antithetical statement. It wasn't a surprise at just how committed and dedicated and hardworking this team continuously comes together every year. They take their charge so seriously. So that wasn't necessarily a surprise. It was really become kind of a standard of excellence and expectation with this group, but just incredible to see nonetheless.
I think Director Bergman, the one thing that I feel has been a consistent theme is every year, we'll have educators that go to different, go into buildings for new, but we have educators being exposed to what different buildings are doing, parents and students being exposed to things. And every year, it's almost a revelation what is going on in our buildings and people are so impressed by the hard work that is going on. And I think that some of the background behind people who are like, we need to tell more about what is going on because people are just amazed by the work. And I think that we're so immersed in the work on a daily basis that you sort of lose track of if you're focused on your student and busy, you don't see behind the scenes how much hard work is going on. And so I think that it's a really hard thing to try to do, communicate all the work that's going on since we know that we've been doing a great job about communicating our wins and people are like, give us more, give us more, show us, show us all the great work that's going on. And I think every year, I just, it's surprising to me only in the sense that I'm so immersed in it. It's always a, just such a good news story that no matter who it is, whether it's an educator, parent or student, people are just so impressed by what's going on.
And kind of like that wonderful Normandale presentation of what we just saw. It's a great example of what you just said.
And I would add to that, too. This year, we got to go into buildings and I think there was, that was a really neat new experience and like Chair Ellenberg said, to even hear from our teachers who said how valuable it was to go to a different elementary school or even more so what I heard was elementary teachers saying, it was so great to see middle school because now I kind of understand where my students are working towards and they just really appreciated that. And then I would also say a theme across the three years is Dr. Stanley has done an excellent job of bringing a vast variety of stakeholders to the table. And so it's beneficial, Erica talked about how we have a front row seat to a lot of the work going on, but it's so valuable when we're talking about these big strategies to have different inputs from parents and students and teachers on some of those strategic initiatives to say, you know, to share their ideas and then to, you know, Paula's group always does a great job of gathering that information and then distilling it out and looking for themes. So I really appreciate having the opportunity to hear from so many different stakeholders.
I don't know if there's any, necessarily any surprises. I would say a theme is intentionality, diligence, voice, common voice and engagement, engagement of our staff throughout the process, engagement of students throughout the process and that this, the other, the other thing that I commonly hear is to know that the strategic plan is not just a piece of paper that is hanging up on a wall someplace or is posted on our website. It is something that we are intentionally working on.
Anything else from board members? Well, I'll just thank both Dr. Stanley and Paula. I, Dr. Stanley, what you said about the intentionality and about making sure strategically it was living, I can't stress the importance of that and the value that you've brought to the district in doing this and bringing it to the community. I really appreciate that and I appreciate Paula, your team's work in doing this on an annual basis. So thank you and thank you for bringing it tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We are going to move on to our next discussion item, which is a media specialist board update led by Dr. Randy Smazel. And before I turned over to Randy, I just wanted to make sure the board understood that this is a information update about the media specialist model for next year because board members and I know community members are interested in the implementation of media specialists for next year, but the model itself is not up for debate or discussion. And so if board members have questions, obviously ask them, but I just wanted to make sure that we were level setting expectations about the intent of what this item or discussion is. Superintendent or Assistant Superintendent Smazel?
Thank you, Chair Allenberg, Superintendent Stanley, board members and community. I'm joined this evening with Nathaniel Lindley, our new director of Media and Technology Services, and Matt Flugum, our digital learning coordinator. And we're going to provide an informational update to the board on our media specialist plan. So the purpose of that report is to really just share what are the roles and responsibilities of our media specialist moving forward into the 2425 school year and to share a little bit about that staffing model that was solidified through numerous meetings with principals and media specialists. And again, this is an informational update, so just for a little bit of background and then I'll turn it over to Nathaniel to talk about process and for Matt to talk about some next steps. So recall, of course, that on March 4th, the board approved the budget containment proposal A1 that included the reduction of media specialist staffing from 9.0 to 7.5 FTE. District leadership partnered with principals in the building. We partnered with media specialists to evaluate various media specialist staffing models. And then we collected information from districts surrounding Edina Public Schools, so many neighboring districts. And then a final model was developed for the 2425 school year. And then we will also be developing an evaluation framework for that model so that we can take in information and assess that model for needed adjustments beyond 2425. So with that, I'll turn it over to Nathaniel to talk a little bit about our process that we went through to get to that point. And then again, to Matt to talk about next steps and then back to the board for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Smazel. Good evening, Chair Allenberg, Superintendent Stanley, members of the school board. So the process that we undertook.
I think you're muted, Nathaniel.
Nope, you can hear me? Okay. To design the staffing model with the reduction put in place was setting parameters of what were acceptable and non-aspectable means to guide the options for staffing assignments to align with our program goals. The three main considerations we used were structural, programmatic and professional. Structural considerations included enrollment, course sections, building, staffing, travel and consistency at those sites. Programmatic included our strategic directions, A1, A2, B1, C4, and alignment of student experiences, digital literacy and STEM. Professional considerations included the teacher contract, the Pelsby guidance, the media specialist job description and media programming models. So through these structures, we utilize the I-Rod process to gather information and reactions and work through that framework to guide the conversation through information, reactions and decision-making. Discussions and feedback sessions were held multiple times with various stakeholders, including the media specialist, human resources, district leadership, teaching and learning leadership, principals and EME representation. So on April 15th, through an I-Rod decision-making framework with all principals, we led to a staffing allocation model of 3.0 FTE at secondary and four and a half FTE at elementary. Then on the 19th of April, we presented the staffing model with the media specialists. And the change in staffing in our elementary schools with 4.5 FTE was presented and potential iterations of that staffing schedule were started to be developed. Based on the elementary classroom sections at each grade level was agreed that the elementary school would receive either a 0.8 FTE or a 0.7 FTE of media specialist support. This requires some schools to have more than one media specialist supporting their programming and some specialists would need to work at more than one school. I think Matt is going to step in with the media programming model.
Thank you, Director Lindley. Chair Ellenberg, Dr. Stanley, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to give you an update. Looking at the program model and what this looks like for the, the schools. Elementary schools will receive three and a half to four days with that shared model that Director Lindley talked about. We prioritize keeping media spaces open and accessible to students so they can still check out books. They can still use some of the technology within the media spaces, even if the media specialists aren't there. And when the media specialists are present, they will be focusing their efforts on teaching classes, on coordinating with teachers and on supporting students to develop that level of reading that we know is so important. Secondary schools will receive five days of media specialist services each week. And we again want to make sure that our media centers are as accessible as possible within this. And we'll be accomplishing that through some staffing supports with our media assistants, as well as our tech pairs and our media specialists really planning together to figure out what that looks like. Media specialists will continue to develop physical and digital management of our, our curated resources so that students can see themselves in the books that they have access to as well as to help to support classroom teachers in integrating literacy. We will work to continue alignment within the media programming so that K-12, we have a vertical alignment and we have horizontal alignment across our districts. So every student receives a very similar experience and we can count on that experience as we go through. Again, this has a lot to do with the strategic plan and we want to focus especially on digital citizenship and digital literacy. As we know, that's become so important and will continue to be so, as well as continuing work with STEAM and computer science as computer science standards are developed. Our next steps as we move into the next year, the digital learning coordinator and assistant director of teaching and learning will help to establish a daily schedule that teachers will understand that will be pretty common across the district so that our educators and our students will know when they will have the media specialist present and available to help support that learning. As well as establishing, as Dr. Smazl represented, a program evaluation of how do we know that this is working? And what elements do we maybe need to put some more information and effort into assessing as well as goal development as we move through? And so with that, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Board members, what questions or comments do you have? Director Gable?
Thanks you three for this update and for the report. Is there, is it, do you anticipate that maybe a year from now when you're analyzing the past year and how this model worked? Would this either go with the board possibly get an update on things learned? Reflections on the model? Or, you know, since, since you said they're building out what the measurement model will look like, is that something that you envision coming back to the board or going through teaching and learning? Or just kind of a management issue?
Well, I think that definitely would be something that provides value to the program and to report on what we set out as our measurement goals and being able to see if we accomplish that and then learn from that experience of what adjustments might need to be made based on that. So I would predict that's a valuable thing to do with the board.
Any, anything else from board members? Director Hubie?
Just the assumption is that it's a evaluation from an annual perspective? Or are you looking first year to piece it out even more if there's adjustment that's needed? Mid-year?
Yeah, I think, I think for sure. I mean, right now we're trying to make the adjustments, especially in elementary where the staffing numbers have changed to try to see how we can deliver a consistent experience across the six sites, given that we're at 0.7 and 0.8. And so there'll be some immediate adjustments, I would guess, in the fall as we start working with the schedules at individual schools of what that instructional delivery looks like. So I'm predicting there'll be some adjustments in the beginning of the first half of the year as we get comfortable with that. Moving from a full 1.0 in the building that has the flexibility to work with the teachers, courses and sections to a little more, a little bit more limited availability. But also at the end of the year, looking back at what was accomplished and what instructional goals were met.
Thank you, Director Lindley, and congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you.
I really appreciate the work that you guys have done on this and I appreciate the work you've done on non-negotiables and trying to keep this as closely aligned to or giving as much coverage as possible to our elementary schools, given the budgetary constraints that we have. I do, I would appreciate a follow-up, probably a year to see, to better understand, given our non-negotiables, how is this able to meet our non-negotiables? And then I don't know if it'd be included in this or a separate discussion, but I really appreciate you guys pulling out the specific elements tied to the strategic plan around digital. I mean, as you mentioned, or maybe as Matthew mentioned, how important digital citizenship and integration and information literacy are, as well as our STEAM and computer science programming are. I would like to get a better understanding in the board to get a better understanding of from a curricular perspective, how are we engaging our students in those? And I know that we get, so I guess more from a digital citizenship perspective, since we're getting STEAM updates on a fairly regular basis. And, but what does that curriculum actually look like? And how are we implementing it consistently across the district? And so maybe that could be something else a year from now that we could get some more information about how are we building out that capacity to educate our students on those important topics?
Yes.
Anything else from our board members? Okay, thank you guys so much. Next we have an LAC board recap. I'll turn it over to Director Arum and Director Barry.
Thanks, everybody. Just a brief recap of the 2024 legislative session. I wanted to say thanks to Cheryl for all your help with everything and planning. And then a little bit of a discussion to kind of about where we're at, what we did this past year. In terms of the LAC platform and whatnot, we had a very broad platform that focused heavily on more policy-related things, since it's a non-budget year. But we did some budget work as well around letters and some of the training associated with that. We mirrored a lot of the, the larger initiatives and platforms of MSBA and AMSD. So success was judged a bunch of different ways, but I feel like we made some headway, at least for sure, in the, the letters training and then also some of the, the mental health initiatives and then also the SRO legislation that got passed as well, or corrections that got passed. You know, just from an event and activity perspective of the LAC, we hosted an LAC breakfast that had representatives from all the local or state legislature, as well as some of the federal legislature representatives that attended. We also, it's a prospective candidates attend, so that was a well-attended event. Each, each group got to speak a little bit about their platform, what their priorities were. And most importantly, I believe the students and the, and the LAC members got a chance to network and build relationships with those individual representatives. And that kind of led us on to the, to the LAC Day at the Capitol. We had about, I think it was like 35-ish people that went there. And we were by far the largest contingency of students and communities represented there. We were pulled aside by numerous other districts to say, how do you get all these kids to participate? So a big thank you to the, the teachers and the staff who are encouraging the students to advocate for themselves and kind of push forward with being a part of the whole process. And so I think we wouldn't be able to do that without the strong social studies department that we have at Edina. You know, from the other, the ongoing LAC advocacy efforts piece of it, we mobilized the students and the community members as much as possible. Community members put together some really great guidelines for how kids could, or students could interact with them. And then, so we had each one kind of assigned a different piece where they were going to go out and contact them either via email, phone call or a letter campaign. And I think those are, at the very least, very successful from an advocacy standpoint. You know, and getting them engaged with individuals and kind of responding to the fact that most of the legislators and representatives say that the student voice is super important. So we're, we're glad that we were able to elevate quite a few of their voices. And then we also had legislators come visit and tour our facilities earlier in the school year. I believe that most of those legislators came back and said that was a very helpful exercise to, to see the, their program in action and this, the different programs. And to be able to speak with teachers and faculty and district administration, it was very helpful for them as well. In the last month or so, we've had several graduating seniors who are leaving LAC. So we went through an application process to bring back, you know, incumbent students who wanted to be a part of it and then add more. So you'll see in your packet, there's a list of students who are, are going to represent the LAC for next year. And next year being a financially or fiscal year, there'll be a lot of activity that we're looking forward to. So we'll get started with that a little bit over the summer and then start ramping up in the fall. Cheryl, anything you wanted to add?
Something we heard from some of the students was they were interested in getting more involved. And so now that we have returning students on our board, we are hoping to structure the board slightly differently where we can give those students the opportunity to head up some of our events for next year. Give them more of, more responsibility in contacting the legislators and planning some of the events. So that's going to be exciting. And some of them are interested in doing more of a social media campaign for us to get the community involved and informed in what we're doing and hopefully get some people willing to make some calls for us this year. So good things to come, stay tuned. Involved and informed in what we're doing.
Thank you, guys. Oh, we lost all of the light in our room now.
Make some calls for us this year. So good things to come, stay tuned.
Move around, there we go. Thank you, guys, all for all your work.
Involved and informed in what we're doing.
Thank you, guys. It's a team effort and as you said, Director Arum, it's a finance year next year. So it's going to be an even larger effort on everyone's part. So thank you very much. Do any board members have questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is our policy review. And I'll turn it over to Director Gable.
Thank you, Chair Ellenberg. We have a shorter list of policies to discuss this evening. And the first one up for discussion is policy 506. So I'm going to invite Assistant Superintendent Dr. Smazl to talk to us a little bit about this policy. And as a reminder, this is a policy that has to be reviewed by the board every year. And there's been some massive overhaul of this policy within the last, I think it was last year was when we really dug in deep. Dr. Smazl has worked really hard to engage lots of stakeholders and have lots of different eyes on this policy. And so he's going to talk us through some of the changes that you're seeing this time around.
Thank you, Director Gable. The proposed changes are a reflection of clarifications made to legislation, updates from the MSBA model policy and then feedback from our K-12 administrators, our school board policy committee and also our district equity advisory committee. On our district equity advisory committee, they often look at policies to give other perspectives back to the board. So we have representative administrators, teachers, parents and students that participate in DEAK, our district equity advisory committee. So our district equity advisory committee met on April 27th to get some feedback about desired changes and updates to the policy. And then we took it to our K-12 principals and site leaders in May. And then we also had our legal counsel do a review in May of the policy compared to any changes via statute, et cetera. And then our school board policy committee, May 30th, and then again, we're here this evening. So this is, as Director Gable mentioned, an annual review of this policy is required. Just as a couple of background pieces as a reminder, you'll see the word dismissals referenced sometimes in policy 506 and that refers to suspensions, expulsions and exclusions. And those are not allowed in pre-K3 except for situations where non-exclusionary practices have been exhausted and only in circumstances where there is an ongoing safety threat to the child or others. So sometimes there's a little question about whether or not we can do that or we should do that. But there, there are situations where that does still happen, but it's only under those circumstances. Appendix one describes about 50 different categories of behaviors that sometimes we have to provide discipline around or correction around, if you will. A lot of those categories have asterisks that denote that when the action is at the discretion of the administrator and it's largely based upon maybe some unique or specific circumstances. Each category of actions is developed with a progressive approach to ensure that behavior expectations are met. And some categories have small adjustments to provide some additional clarity or better match desired practice from our administrators. Our priority is for students to learn from their mistakes. And so a big part of this policy is to make sure that we are providing an educate, taking it as an educational opportunity to help students understand what was the impact of that behavior? And how can we better curb that behavior in the future? And then parent and student communication are key to the partnership between schools and families related to this policy. So I'll go, I'll walk through a couple of the proposed changes. And then we can turn it back over to Director Gable here for, for questions with the board. The first proposal is to have a an adapted purpose statement. And this really came from the feedback from our district equity advisory committee with the desire to really try, tie that purpose statement to the vision and mission and to also really focus on the opportunity for restorative practices and educating students when they have a behavior that isn't aligned with our expectations. And we can talk about whether that purpose statement is, needs to be adapted or not. But that was what was proposed and then presented to the committee. There's also under definitions in section three, there's a new definition around removal and what that means. And that was provided through Trevor, our attorney, as an additional definition. And then under section four, under areas of responsibility, we did streamline some of the language at the end of C, at the end of D and at the end of E because it was really redundant. And we added it to F, which was really about a clarification around reasonable force and when reasonable force, under what circumstances? Let me back up. In terms of reasonable force, that we have school employees or agents of the district that are not able to use prone restraint, for example. And so that would not be an example of reasonable force, that would be a limitation to that. So there's some language that we added in F to streamline C, D and E. And then I will fast forward to Roman numeral number eight, where we add some additional language about restorative practices. And again, this came out of our conversation with the district equity advisory committee and the desire to be a little bit more clear about what that is about. And then there's some bulleted description. And then there's some bulleted descriptions of what disciplinary action may include but not be limited to. And so we added a little bit of information there about what restorative practices refers to. And then I will jump to Section Roman numeral seventeen, where it says open enrolled students. We just removed some of the legal references in the body of the policy. And so we just have those general legal reference statements so that we're more consistent with how other policy is written. And then the actual specific legal references are listed at the back of the policy. In terms of the appendix, our principals have developed a few updates to the appendix around first, second, and third offenses as indicated. Most of it is minor cleanup for consistency or to better align with desired practices. One that I'll point out is under physical infractions for sixteen, seventeen, eighteen is the statement that school administration remains or retains discretion to advance to higher levels of discipline based on the severity of an infraction, just because there's such a variation that can occur under those categories. So they wanted to be able to have the ability to elevate that up if that really is at the level of a second or a third type of offense. In terms of the other items and adjustments, again, most of them are cleanup items or consistency items. And then the last thing I'll add is that upon approval, which would come back in July, we will do an update in our superintendent back to school letter, and we'll also do an update in our website. And then this information is sent to families. We would do an update for staff in the fall in service. And then one of the things that would be a great next step for our administrators is just training around inner rate or reliability and the use of the rubric given different kinds of behavior scenarios, because that's an opportunity for us to continue to grow the way in which we consistently apply the policy. So with that, I'll pause and see what questions our board members have.
Assistant Superintendent Smazel, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment around the purpose statement that you alluded to. And I like some of the updates. I'm struggling with two things about the statement. What is the very last sentence about our ultimate goal to provide each student with the necessary tools and support to navigate challenges, develop resilience, and discover their possibilities and thrive? I absolutely agree with that statement. However, I don't know that that, to me, I don't know that that belongs in a purpose statement about student conduct and discipline. That to me reads very much like a our ultimate goal for the district from a social and emotional perspective. I think that when we're talking about student conduct and discipline, our ultimate goal is really what the first two sentences talk about is having a safe, respectful, supportive school learning community. And that's what the ultimate goal of discipline is. I could see maybe if we want to include that statement, I could see maybe adding it to like the statement about students below. I'm just struggling with having that in the purpose of student conduct and discipline. And then my other comment or question is I I love the statement through an equitable approach to discipline. I'm struggling inserting the use of restorative and restorative alone, because I don't know that that I feel like it's a little disingenuous, because our approach to discipline is fairly balanced. We have a lot of different types of discipline. I think that we can strive to want to be restorative. The reality is that there that's why we have fifty pages of an appendix, is because there are times when education and restorative practices work, and there's probably times when they don't. And so I don't know if like we could, under the purpose statement, talk about like striving to be restorative. I or if we want to have a broader conversation as a board about what restorative disciplinary practices mean and is that the purpose of our discipline? I'm just struggling with, it feels like a real shift to me that we haven't really discussed as a as a board or district. And so I'm just, I'm a little uncomfortable with adding that to just to update our purpose statement without broader discussions.
Thank you for that, Chair Allenberg. Helpful clarification about that. And this is why it comes twice to the board, is to kind of have some opportunity to discuss. And so other board members, I'd love to hear your thoughts on that as we work to get this to be a purpose statement that we all feel comfortable with and we feel like is indicative of what we're striving for here. Go ahead, Michael.
So Erica, I'm just trying to make sure I understand. You're saying the the second sentence through a restorative and equitable approach to discipline? The way that that's worded, did I hear you correctly when you say you thought that our only approach is through a restorative process? And you were concerned about that that was a shift? Can you just, I didn't quite follow which language part was the most raising for you?
I said that I think that only saying through a restorative approach to discipline because I'm I'm concerned that we actually have a multiple types of discipline, but in our purpose statement, we're being, we're limiting it. And we're saying in our purpose statement that we are offering restorative discipline. And we're not needing any other types of discipline.
Right. And so you're you're using the word only in a in a pretext of what the meaning of this is. It doesn't obviously say that the only, it's the only way to do it. But it's your your concern is that it could be implied that that's our only approach is through a restorative and equitable approach to discipline? When there are multiple ways of doing that.
Because then if you look actually down in the definition, it's, I mean, it's it depends how you're defining restorative. And we've actually defined it below as a type of discipline, restorative practices. But there are a lot of other types of discipline. And so I'm concerned that by putting it up in the purpose, it looks like we're defining all of our discipline as a restorative approach to discipline. So I'm concerned we're limiting ourselves in the purpose statement.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but I'm wondering if I put this idea on the table and maybe the rest of the board will come back and say, actually, we really like that sentence. But I'm wondering if we would take the first part of that sentence off. We strive to cultivate a culture of accountability, growth, and understanding, because within that we talk about, I mean, growth is about, part of restorative is a growing process and understanding and accountability. I wonder if that would be an option.
Can you say that again, Karen? Sorry, I wasn't tracking.
So this, I'm looking at that second sentence with if we remove the first clause. So it would just say, we strive to cultivate a culture of accountability, growth, and understanding. Elliot?
If we want, yeah, that that I think would be fine. I'm fine either way. As I say, if we want to keep equitable in there as well, we could say we strive to cultivate an equitable culture of accountability. And then that still and I think that still includes having an equitable approach. And then we still have restorable or restorative practices in our definitions too, if that is amenable, I guess. But I'm fine either way. I guess I don't have strong feelings either way.
Okay, Chair Allenberg, thanks.
I would like to keep equitable in there. And I and I have no opposition to the what's the word I'm looking for, for the like thought around restorative? I'm just wondering if there's a different word other than a specific word restorative? Because I think since we're using it as a definition below as a type of discipline. So I think if the team could maybe just work on that clause, and if we do want to say some type of if we do want to make a statement about an approach to discipline that is a similar type of phrasing, just I don't want to pigeonhole ourselves with that one specific word, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think I think what's really important is that there is a lot of elements throughout the rest of the edits. If you go through all of the document, there's a lot more reference to restorative practices throughout different elements. You'll see that in the blue as you go through the edits. So I think we can accomplish what you just said. I think your point, I think, has a lot of validity to restorative practices as an element of discipline as opposed to the core of all discipline. And while I didn't necessarily read it the way that you're interpreting it, I could understand, based on how you've presented it, that could raise a question in some people's mind. So I think that's where I would sort of think we're doing what you said in the rest of the document. This part, I think there could be some wordsmithing around that.
Okay, before we take it back, just so that I make sure I have the consensus of the board, there's been a recommendation that that second sentence is wordsmithed a little bit to maybe make sure that we are talking about that an approach to discipline has many different approaches. And that might mean taking some words out. But we feel fairly comfortable that we want to keep equitable and the second half of that sentence. Am I understanding the board that that is how the majority of the board feels? Okay, great. And then the other recommendation on the board was that the third sentence maybe gets further worked out or maybe even eliminated. How are people feeling about that? See. Any thoughts?
It was my recommendation.
I would agree. I would agree with the removal part of it. If, well, I shouldn't say it. I'm not, I don't think it has to be removed. But the reality is, I don't necessarily know if it needs to be in the purpose statement.
Okay. Anyone have strong feelings in the opposite direction? Great. Administrators, I do want to give you an opportunity based on what you've heard or if you want to kind of share your insight into why it might work to keep some of those things in or some things that we you've heard missing from this conversation.
Yeah, I really appreciate the conversation and the time with the board. I'll go back to the conversation we had in the District Equity Advisory Committee with the need to help people understand both families and students that part of what this policy is about, it's student conduct and discipline. And part of what this policy is about is also educating kids about the impact of their behavior. So there was that recommendation from DEAK about how do we do that? How does this policy articulate that in the purpose? That part of what we're doing is we're not only just curbing that discipline, curbing that behavior in a punitive way, but we're also educating kids at the same time. And that was that was the feedback that we got from DEAK. But I think there are some good suggestions about some wordsmithing that we can do. And what I hear is we haven't quite landed on that. But we can take that back and try to evolve some of that language a little bit to adapt for the conversation we had tonight. Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Smazel. I really appreciate the work, not only this time, but throughout the last several years to really get this in working shape. And we hear from our administrators, they really do use this policy and really refer to it. So I appreciate the work on it. And board members, thank you for this discussion. It's very helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, then we are going to move on to Policy seven seventeen. And this is a policy that we discussed last month. And there were some specific questions that came up around who had the permission to view the video. And I might call on Dr. Stanley a little bit to add her perspective on this. Because it did come back to the committee, and there was a specific question around that the policy did not directly address that school resource officers can view video and law enforcement can view it at their request. And so the question was, do we need to state that specifically? And Dr. Stanley, do you want to talk a little bit about kind of the thought process behind why we didn't feel like it needed to be specifically called out?
Yeah, for sure. You know, we checked in with Trevor. And what he explained is that in situations where there is something criminal that has happened, something that is serious enough to rise to the level of working with the police, that we provide that data to them. We own the data ourselves, and there's a lot of data there that is private data that might not pertain to something that is specifically a child that is specifically involved. He looked at a variety of policies. And so we're going to share that data with SROs, but it doesn't mean that they are, they or the police department would come in and just be able to say, I want to see the data from June eighth, the video from June eighth, if that makes sense.
Thank you. And I think another question, or as we were talking about it too, the superintendent has the ultimate decision in terms of who would, who would be able to view that video? And I, because I know there was another question that came up from a board member that talked about, you know, what if we had something happen where another school district needed information? And it's it's in the jurisdiction of the superintendent to decide when video would be viewed by people outside employees, certain employees of the school district. So with that being explained, does that, does the board feel comfortable with this, with seven seventeen moving on next month for action? Okay, great. Thank you. And thanks, Dr. Stanley. All right, next up, we have a conversation around two policies, eight oh five Waste Reduction and Recycling and eight eleven Environmental Resources Management. And we have Director Woodard here to walk us through these two policies.
Thank you, Director Gable. The Policy Committee, through a couple of different meetings, actually, I think, is moving towards recommending that eight oh five be actually repealed for the simple fact that it reads a lot more like a procedure or administrator manual, which we believe is not to be the intention of School Board Policy, nor is it practical to administer to the fullest extent at all times. At the same time, we believe that eight oh five lists a number of values the school district believes in, and we wish to have those live on within other policies, which is why we recommended a couple of amendments to Policy eleven, which we believe keeps those alive within Policy eight eleven. Those two being a reference to recycling and the another reference to the procurement of recyclable or otherwise sustainable commodities. One thing to note is that the Minnesota School Boards Association does not actually have model policies for these two items. And so we're kind of running alone on this matter at this time.
Thank you for that, Director Woodard. And just to restate what he, what Director Woodard talked about, the Policy Committee, as we started to review eight oh five specifically, it really got in the weeds and the details of prescription of how the school district should do all of these things. And generally, in practice, policy should be much broader and kind of visionary on things like this. And the management side of things then is tasked with the implementation of we are going to recycle, we are going to make sure that we are preserving natural resources with the decisions that we make, and so on and so forth. So I just wanted to kind of add some color to that as well. Board members, do you have any questions? Chair Allenberg?
I totally agree with consolidating the policies. I think actually the appendices to Policy eight oh five are more important than the policy itself. And so my question is, where would the appendices to Policy eight oh five live? Would those move to Policy eight eleven or because it talks about how to get rid of medical waste and things like that?
Director Woodard, do you want to speak specifically the appendices, the medical waste question we did talk about?
And it sets expectation for sites that you will have a recycling program. Like, will those live somewhere?
You know, I say that, I would say that some of the items are just things that we would naturally do anyway. So, you know, to the extent that this might affect how we view other policies. You know, to the extent that this might affect how we view other policies. You know, my personal opinion would be that we, we wouldn't necessarily go to that extent on this policy, because we might have to go to that extent on all other policies. But again, that's, that's the will of the school board.
I think the question is, I think the question is, is whether or not the appendices, as it says, is calling out items. If it doesn't live in a policy, but it kind of falls into the operational unit that is responsible for that. It's there, right? It, it still lives and breathes as what we do. It just doesn't take the form or gets its quote unquote authorization out of policy.
Which I'm fine with, I'm just wondering where it would live. Which I'm wondering is, maybe that's how it ended up in policy, because there wasn't a natural place for it to live.
Yeah, I would say that if we were to maintain those appendices as they are now. Then our recommendation of actually removing 805 is actually kind of pointless at that, at that point. So I guess I'm not understanding the question.
I wonder if I'm understanding you correctly, Chair Ellenberg. Director Woodard, some of these things that are in the appendix are kind of discussed and worked on through. Go Green Committee, Buildings and Grounds, kind of the day-to-day operations, is that fair to say? And, and we do designate, we do have a policy that calls out our Go Green Committee. Am I remembering that correctly? Oh, Dr. Stanley.
I think some of the conversations that we had was related to. Whether or not a policy should. Go that deep into the funnel. Very specifically, those were, those are the conversations that were had on the Policy Committee. And whether or not having, it's kind of hard to talk about 805 without the context of 811. And so in 811, it moves the work. To. To more of, I don't know any other way to say it, except to say to more of a policy level so that. What is so specific and laid out step by step in 805 and the appendices. It's brought up maybe to, instead of being deep, deep in. To the very steps, it says, the district will focus on the following areas of environmental resources and management. Reduce the amount of energy consumed, reduce the amount of resources consumed. Separation and recovery of recyclable waste, which some of those things that are. Procurement and recyclable, sustainable commodities. So some of those items that are very specified in. The appendices, they're in 811, it's just not to the very specific steps. And individuals are wondering if that should be, the very specific steps should be in policy.
And to clarify, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just wondering. Where in our district then does this information reside, like?
Probably, and probably in building and grounds manuals.
Okay, that's, that's all I'm wondering, is making sure that somewhere in our district, this information lives somewhere. So when we have a new building grounds person come on. That they actually see, oh, the district expectation is that we're recycling fluorescent lights. Or whatever it is, that's, that's all I'm saying, is making sure whatever's here lives somewhere in our district. I absolutely agree, it should not be in a policy manual. It's way too granular for a policy manual. I just want to make sure it is living somewhere. And we don't lose this information.
Noted.
That was it.
Other questions, comments, discussion around this recommendation to Sunset 805 as a policy? The practice will still live on, but through more procedures and, and the management side of things. And move forward with 811. Everyone okay with that? Okay, great. Thank you, Director Woodard and outgoing Buildings and Grounds Supervisor. For working on this. Okay, then these policies will all move forward for. Approval. Next one.
Thank you, Director Gabler and Policy Team and everyone that worked on that. We're going to move on to our action items. Do I have a motion to approve the 2024 Metro South Adult Basic Education Joint Powers Agreement? I don't know who did what, but hopefully.
I'll second.
Okay, there we go. Director Leland.
Good evening. It's wonderful to be here with all of you tonight. This is yet again, our agreement with Metro South Consortium. And this is a longstanding agreement we have with Bloomington Public Schools, who is the fiscal agent. Who helps us provide programming, family literacy programming, which is robust. We are in year two of some really great family literacy programming, which means that we've got. Parents coming in or caregivers with their, with their little ones. They have time together, learning together as families, and then there's, they go, they're separate ways for a while. And our parents and caregivers get some really good information from our ECFE facilitators. So it's just been wonderful. We also have a growing program around adult basic education. And we are thrilled to have our community members take classes to learn English and to learn skills. That will possibly lead to great things, literacy, numeracy, all of the things that we do. Pre-K 12, we also do with our adults, so leading to great careers. There were minimal changes to the agreement. However, they are, Bloomington is going through a bit of a transition, so I was able to talk to their Assistant Superintendent about some of the changes. To the agreement, we needed to update the language around the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. That has changed a few years ago and they had old language. Adult Basic Education lives in Title II federally of the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, and they had some old language there. I caught some things here and there as this was what I used to do for a living in the adult education field at the state level. So it's been a good, it's been good programming and I'm happy that you are here to approve this agreement.
Thank you, Director Leland. Questions or comments for board members? Hearing done. Anne, do you want to call, do the roll call for this vote?
Ellenberg.
Aye.
Aram. Looks like an I. Barry.
Aye.
Birdman.
Aye.
Gabler.
Aye.
Uvi.
Aye.
Ma'am.
Aye.
I don't know if you need me, Anne, but aye, sorry.
I have a vote of seven to zero. The 2024 Metro South Adult Basic Education Joint Powers Agreement is approved. Thank you. I have a motion to approve the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Director Woodard.
Thank you, Chair Ellenberg. We have finally reached the conclusion of a process that formally began in November of 2023. Informally began actually in late September and early October. At this point, none of the information throughout our dozens of public and non-public meetings has changed. All this information again was provided at last month's work session. The only change is that the packet that is included in tonight's material looks a little bit better. It's branded with our, our edina colors. I'll quickly go through some highlights before moving towards recommending the formal action for board consideration. Page eight of our executive summary tonight lists the revenues and expenditures of all district funds. However, we'll focus on the general fund portion of our budget for now. There's one minor revision and one major revision to our fiscal year 2024 budget. Last fall and, and spring when we developed our budget for the current year, conservative estimates regarding interest revenues were used. Those in the, who follow the Federal Reserve noted that they were four or five rate hikes or cuts rather. Predicted by the Fed at that time. We did not get four or five rate cuts. In fact, rates have stayed higher for longer. We're expecting that stance to, to continue for at least half of next fiscal year. So we're going to upgrade or improve our interest revenue projection for both this fiscal year and for next fiscal year. Returns of about $625,000 in excess for the current year budget, which is great. In terms of state aids, no material revisions. Final enrollment for this school year should end within 10 to 20 of our budget, which is within, well within the acceptable range. For next school year, our 8,630 expected average day of membership is also being maintained. We'll look at updating that next November when we get our October 1 enrollment counts that we're going to report to the state for fiscal year 26 revenue. The one major revision we have for fiscal year 24, which was also the impetus for our fiscal year 25 BIRD process. Was the $4 million or so of additional staff compensation as a result of collective bargaining agreements being higher than expected. And we live in a highly inflationary world at the moment and collective bargaining agreements are following that inflation. So we've added $4 million to the expenditure budget this year. That $4 million has continued on to next year and has in fact grown with steps in lanes for those employees. Overall, expecting the current fiscal year to end at about a 5.87% unassigned fund balance, which is slightly higher than the 5.67% that we discussed over the previous weeks and months. Please note that at this stage, all figures are unaudited. We may overperform or underperform in certain areas due to unexpected dispersment timing. So if we expect to pay for something in June, but that actually is paid in July, we have to account for that in a separate period and vice versa. So those timing changes can make differences to the way we report our fund balances. That being said, we've budgeted in such a way that any variances to our budget will likely be favorable rather than reductions to fund balance. Fiscal year 2025 at this stage, as I mentioned earlier, is exactly the same as the, the BIRD process indicated. So that includes a $3.62 million budget reduction. I would like to add that over the last two years, we've done cost containment measures to the tune of about $7.62 million. At this time, none of those reductions, to my knowledge, has resulted in one single licensed classroom teacher being terminated due to means of unnatural attrition. I think that's a celebration for the district and something that's going to be more and more difficult to repeat as the years go on. Hopefully, we won't have to have cost containment to this degree in the future. We are expecting, I believe, two years of fiscal stability. We'll revisit our five-year projection in October or November this coming fall. Moving to the Food Service Fund on page nine, you'll notice significant increases to both revenues and expenditures. That's due primarily to the, the free meal program. So not only are we now receiving the highest federal reimbursement rates from both the state and the federal government. We're also noticing a lot more participation, so more revenues. That's also being slightly offset by increased costs. Of course, we're serving more meals that cost more money. But that fund is going to continue to operate in a structurally balanced manner with no support from the general fund, which is exactly what you want from your special revenue funds. Page 10 depicts our Community Service Fund, which like the Food Service Fund continues to operate without any financial assistance from the General Fund. In the current year, fiscal year 2024, we're expecting a healthy addition to the fund balance of about $300,000. And we expect the fund balance increases for fiscal year 2025 and beyond. On the next page, in the Building Construction Fund, we've increased investment earnings similar to the general fund. Higher rates have lasted for longer than expected. And also we're expecting decreased expenditures next school year due to the completion of the countryside project this school year. So it's a design spend down that occurred this school year. Next school year, we'll be back to normal LTFM projects for the next few years. Finally, we have our last governmental fund, the Debt Service Fund. Not too much excitement in this fund. All, this fund is directly contributed to our principal and interest payments for our general obligation bond debt. That supports our long-term facilities maintenance program as well as the 2025 voter-approved bond, which was in the level of about $134 million. So we'll continue to pay that out over the next 10 years. And that's the conclusion of our, of our budget for next school year. We recommend that the school board adopt it as presented tonight. And with that, I'll turn it over for any questions.
Questions for board members? Director Birdman.
Just as we say all the time, just want to reiterate again, thank you Mert and Dr. Stanley for the continued financial management, all these different. Mechanisms and education, not only to the board, but to the community as to how we're doing this. And we're executing exactly like we said we would. And hopefully, we can continue to provide the best financial scenario that is given to us by all the variables that are at play. So I just wanted to extend my appreciation for all that work.
Thank you, Director Birdman. I'm Director Gabler.
Thank you. I too wanted to say thank you for this report. This is a, this is a beautiful report. I mean, it really looks, it's a nice looking report and it's very informative and very well laid out. And so I don't know if you have intentions of putting this on the website, but I would encourage you to, because it is. Or maybe even having some hard copies. I don't know. I feel like I want to just hand it out to everybody and be, and share how school financing works. And I also want to thank you, Director Woodard, in reading in your consent agenda. You, the missed report, you also saved us some money there too, in terms of our underestimating or overestimating. So I want to thank you on that. Okay, I do have some questions though. My first question is on the, on page. Of the General Fund, page eight. Under Other Financing Sources, I noticed that we have a number for 23, but not for 24 and 25. Is other financing sources, things like contributions we take in through PTOs, Ed Fund, things like that?
Yeah, good question, Director Gabler. So other financing sources refers to things that are actually not considered revenue under general accounting principles of the United States. So this would be things such as the proceeds of bonds. If we sell a bond, that's considered another financing source rather than a revenue. You know, it's just kind of a, a technical accounting term in the way that we have to produce our financial reports. So last year, that 1.27 million refers to a capital note that we had issued to procure some buses. And also some technology equipment. And so for next school year, if and when the school district. Intends to sell a capital note, which we have already kind of said that we would do. At that time, we'll revise the fiscal year 25 budget and move that into the other financing sources category. And out of the expenditures where I have kind of a placeholder until we actually make that formal intention. So good question. And on the flip side, the other financing uses would be. Disbursements for construction basically. We're moving funds out of the general fund and into the building construction fund. So those are considered financing uses rather than ongoing expenditures.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I thought another interesting, and this is my last question, comment, I guess, on page 14. The General Fund Balance History and Comparison was really interesting for me to look at. As we as a board talk a lot about our, our fund balance and just to kind of see this comparison. Was an interesting data point for me. So thanks for including that.
Thank you, Director Gabler. Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, Anne, I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Ellenberg.
Aye.
Aram.
Aye.
Barry.
Aye.
Birdman.
Aye.
Gabler.
Aye.
Uvi.
Aye.
Ma'am.
Aye.
I have a vote of seven to zero. The preliminary budget for fiscal year 2025 is approved. Thank you, Director Woodard. Do I have a motion to approve Policies 714, 716, 718, 720, 721, 801, 802, 804, 808, and 813?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Director Gabler.
Thank you. The only two that I want to draw to your attention. 721 was, there was a question asked last month. 721 was, there was a question asked last month about background checks for trainers for animals in our schools. And so there, you will notice on 717 that that has been explicitly, that has been called out in there. And then also a cross-reference to our policy that deals with background checks for our volunteers. And then the other one that I wanted to call out to is 813, which is our aquatics policy. We have just made sure that it is cross-referenced with our health and safety policy because that's the overarching policy that kind of drives some of those things that are mentioned in 813. So any questions about this? Otherwise, we'll move forward to a vote on this slate of policies.
I think we're ready to vote, Anne.
Ellen Burke.
Hi.
Aaron.
Hi.
Barry.
Hi.
Birdman.
Hi.
Gabler. Uvi.
Hi.
Ma'am.
Hi.
I apologize, I didn't hear Director Gabler's vote. Did you vote Director Gabler?
My internet froze, I.
Okay. By a vote of seven to zero, policies 714, 716, 718, 720, 721, 801, 802, 804, 808, and 813 are approved. Nice for Policy Committee. Are there any committee updates? Director Birdman.
I just wanted to share with everyone as Edina's representative of intermediate school district 287, I also got to participate in the graduation ceremonies at several of their campuses for the different programs that they have, which included many Edina students and families. And it was a real pleasure and joy, as it is every year, to celebrate our students in that district completing their education programs and continuing on to the next stage of life. So I just wanted to share that it was a wonderful representation for Edina in those ceremonies. So thank you.
Thank you Director Birdman, and congrats to all those students for graduating. Before I move on to superintendent updates, I just wanted to point out to make sure families in the community see our information item about days off next year, that connect and assessed day will be earlier than last year to enable teachers to analyze data prior to student data prior, prior to school starting. And then there is going to be an additional day off next spring. We do not know which day yet, but that's an additional day for educator training around the READ Act. And as soon as we know the day, we will be voting on that to do an update to the calendar. But I just wanted to make sure that families saw that information item. And now I'll turn over to Dr. Stanley for the superintendent updates.
Great, thanks Cheryl and Burke. So Director Gabler, you are absolutely right that that budget report is beautiful. And that budget report actually even received an award. And so Director Woodard, would you turn on your camera if you're still there? Because I really want to recognize him because of the work in just the level of detail of the report. Identical explosion, the certificate of excellence in financial reporting from the Association of Business Officials International. This was our first time receiving this award as a district. And now that he has put in place this comprehensive type of report and as long as he continues to provide this as for our audit, we will now continue to earn this award in perpetuity. So congratulations Mert, I know that that was a goal of yours. Mert put that down as a goal of his for his continuous department improvement plan two years ago. And it was just really exciting and thrilling to receive that email saying that his department was being honored for that. So congratulations to Mert and the entire department and your work for that. Right, I do have a couple of communications that I've received that I'd like to read to the community. And this is from Britt Thies, she's a first grade teacher at Creek Valley. I think it's, is it Thies or is it T's? I know that, I know that Erica would know for sure.
Thies.
Okay. She says, Dr. Stanley, I had a guest teacher in my classroom this past Friday. She's a veteran Chicago Public Schools teacher. She started subbing full-time this past fall in surrounding districts and only subs in Edina on Fridays. She was very complimentary of my first graders reading. She made a point to write, quote unquote, "by the way, your class is advanced in their reading for first graders." I have been teaching in the district since 1996 and this is my 15th year teaching first grade. Never once has a guest teacher pointed out the quality of my readers as an entire class. I can only think that the difference is our deliberate focus on phonics. I've been using Hegarty for many years, but that paired with Sunday has truly made a difference with my students. I myself see a difference in the quality of reading in my class to share, but have, but to have a complete stranger point out, pointed out made me feel so proud of all the hard work we have been doing. I thought you might like to know that I appreciate the work we are all, all uppercase letters, doing as a district to provide our students with the gift of being able to read. That is pretty incredible. And then this comes from a parent and she writes to Sarah, me. She says, Sarah, I wanted to take a moment to express my deepest gratitude for your unwavering dedication and remarkable efforts in nurturing the growth and development of your students, particularly with my son. Over the past year and a half, I have witnessed firsthand the profound impact you have had on his life. Your patience, kindness, and tireless commitment to helping him overcome speech challenges have been nothing short of transformative. Your ability to create a supportive and inclusive learning environment has truly made a difference in his journey. It is not an exaggeration to say that you have changed his life. Your innovative approaches, tailored interventions, and genuine care have not only helped him improve his speech, but have also instilled in him a newfound confidence and belief in his abilities. The progress he has made under your guidance is nothing short of remarkable. And for that, I am eternally grateful. Your passion for teaching and your genuine concern for each student's well-being shine through in everything you do. Your dedication goes beyond the classroom as you consistently go above and beyond to ensure that every student feels valued, supported, and understood. From the bottom of my heart, thank you for being such an exceptional educator and beacon of light for my son. And then I have one more here. And this is from, she's actually a teacher in our system. And Bianca writes, hello Anne Marie, my name is Bianca Suklia. You, you will remember Bianca was one of our candidates for Minnesota Teacher of the Year. And I am writing as a parent of two kids who attend Kids Club at Countryside and as a staff member at EPS fourth grade, Normandale. I wanted to let you know how much I appreciate the palpable difference that the entire Kids Club staff have made in my life these last two years. A special shout out to Jane Tierney, Lucas Bates, and the fabulous Countryside Kids Club staff, Brian Libby, Owen, and Krista. Each and every one of them, all bold printed, has been extremely responsive, positive, creative, and collaborative in ensuring my two daughters have a positive experience in their care these last two years especially. This personalized and culturally proficient approach is not only validating in opening doors for my family as it operates so efficiently on the healthiest side of the CPSS continuum, but it is also empowering, bold printed, for me as a mother and a teacher to see my daughters growing and evolving thanks to these amazing staff members and the community ed family. I would really appreciate it if you could somehow disseminate all of this feedback to everyone that I mentioned to celebrate their successes. Thank you for the huge difference you are making each and every day. We had a graduation, 614 students graduated the other day. We are just super excited and pleased for them. And then I just had to smile because we also had a lot of students start their drivers in class. And when you walk past that classroom, they are sitting there straight up diligently listening to their teacher. Summer programming started through community education. And we have literally thousands of kids who are back in school and having just so much fun with innovative programming. And so kudos to the Community Education Department also for their summer programming. And congratulations to all of our Edina public schools graduates.
Thank you so much, Dr. Stanley. I think that concludes our meeting. So I don't, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I will now vote by roll call to adjourn the meeting.
Ellen Burke.
I.
Aaron.
Hi.
Barry.
Hi.
Birdman.
Hi.
Gabler.
Hi.
Uvi.
Hi.
Ma'am.
Hi.
By a vote of seven to zero, the motion to adjourn the meeting is approved and we are officially adjourned. Thank you everyone, have a good night.